The following program is sponsored by The Greek, Ely's Radio Shack Dealer, the 570 Altman in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. Ely City Council Meeting, May 28th, 2020.
I have your please, Dr. Lee. Fire Chief Rivera. Fire Chief Rivera. Don't believe we have anybody present for that invitation, so we will move on to the roll call.
Mayor Walker.
Present.
Councilman Flankis.
Here.
Councilman Carson.
Here.
Councilman Spear.
Here.
Councilman Alver.
Here.
Councilwoman Beecher. President. Fire Chief Rivera. Fire Chief Rivera. Sheriff Fenroy.
Does that turn up like?
Yeah, they are. They're there. City Engineer Alver.
Here.
City Attorney Trask.
Yeah.
City Attorney Townsend.
Yeah.
I believe that's all we have.
Okay, thank you. With that, we will open the meeting for public.
Yes, no, I'm not.
With that, we'll open the meeting for public comment. Please state your name for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Are you going to take the phones first, or what are you going to do?
Well, maybe first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, on the agenda item 8D4, we're considering possible appointment of Councilman Jim Alver as the City of Ely's point of contact for the City of Ely and others versus Zestnet Short Line Leasing, Dallas C. Mr. Alver should now be appointed as the point of contact. There's been no disclosure, the rumor, the best ones are tens of thousands of dollars from the railroads. He, as well as Councilwoman Beecher, already sit on the railroad board and have a conflict. They cannot represent both sides. Some information is not available to the public, even on the railroad leasing, hundreds of thousands of dollars of taxpayers' money. Councilman Carson should be appointed, as he was one of those who made the mistake that a lot of the railroads spin off in the city oversight. Councilman Carson, as well as the rest of the council railroad board, get this one line of fresh public information dated, in fact, October of 2015. I remind you, you have fiduciary responsibility to protect some public assets and public monies. That's not being ignored. Mr. Mayor, we, fire, just finished putting up a plastic bedroom looking under a commercial building. No permit, no contractor, no inspections, no reports. Did your firm inspector make it back every week with a fight in the city county vehicle that are reported to be bad in September of 2019? Mr. Mayor, back on March 22nd, 2018, I reported two businesses opened up on the 400 block of Murray Street, and neither has provided proper ADA access to date. A new business just opened up, the 201 Altman, does not have ADA access. Going back to October 11th, 2018, there's been a lax, taking the correct, non-ADA informed current better than sidewalk at 790, have good eye. Where's your inspector? Still in Eureka? Why are you selecting the enforcement of the law? Mr. Mayor, at the last meeting, I told you about squires in the community, and those inspectors supposedly told me they're all gone. Again, I want to know what they paid for utilities. I don't care if they were there for a day, a month, they still have the same obligations as anybody else. I'd like their list of everything, what you found, and what they paid. Mr. Mayor, on all occasions, I have asked and I have presented a question for public information in regards to former Councilwoman Joanne Gardner receiving thousands of dollars from the City of Ely, but the city having approached on the property some kind of utility and causing there some kind of harm. Councilman Jim Alver was the city clerk at the time, in charge of the trash, made a check that was approved by the city council. I want to know, how much was she paying? Five thousand? Ten thousand? How long do I have to wait? Mr. Mayor, once again, I'm requesting a complete list of all. I'll be back.
Thank you, Greg.
I need some answers also, Mr. Mayor. Something's going on for you.
Any other public comments in the room? Say, does there any public comment on the Zoom meeting?
Sorry, no other comments for the Zoom meeting? Okay. How are you, Judge? I wasn't sure you were on, Judge, just because you're calling, but we will note your presence. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I called you, Sheriff. I saw that you were present. Thank you.
Hearing no public comment, or no further public comment, we will move on to item 3. Mayor discussion for possible action approval of agenda, including removal of agenda items. So I will entertain any notes or motions on this side.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? I'll call for the vote. I'll have to hear it.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will order to move on to item 4, City Department Reports. Fire Chief Ross, do you have anything to add to your report?
Fire Chief, do you have anything to add to your report?
You need to turn up the volume, Mayor. Nobody can hear that.
We'll move back to them. Police Chief, Sheriff Fenroy, do you have anything to add to your report?
Sheriff Fenroy, do you have anything to add?
Okay. Municipal Court Judge, Judge Costa, anything to add to your report? Are there any questions for Judge Costa? Okay. City Attorney?
City Attorney Townsend, do you have anything to add?
No, I don't.
Thank you. City Clerk? City Treasurer?
No.
Okay. City Public Works Supervisor, is he on the phone?
He's not.
He's not? Okay. City Water Operator, City Engineer?
Not on the air, for a few weeks.
Any questions for the engineer? City Building Official? Don't believe he was on the call.
Probably in Eureka.
We'll move on to item 5, Reports. City Council, Michelle, start with you.
Nothing really to report, although I was pleased to see the response to the revolving loan fund that we have put in place, and that's exciting to see businesses taking advantage of that. I just would encourage any public who might be listening, if, you know, if you have businesses here in Ely, go ahead and take advantage of that. We would love to see as many businesses as possible get assistance from that.
Thank you. Councilman Alver?
No one left to report. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to come in, choreographing his crew for how the cemetery looked on Memorial Day. Really nice.
Really looks sharp. I have nothing to report. No report.
Yes, I do. I have a report, came with the White Mountain County District Waters of the White Mountain, Clark County. They have pulled out totally out of something about water before they pulled all of their obligations for the city and county and whatever on the pipeline and whatnot. And that was after giving that revenue. Let's say the people that are on the committee trying to raise money to keep on fighting this course. There's still a few items that they haven't pulled back on, so we have to consider that now. And I'm glad that that's been achieved. We've gotten an outstanding, any more money. They've rid of sudden lack of water, or trying to put this on everything. I don't know if there was no answer to our question about whether they're going to do it for the right just, but the judge and the manager will sell. That's not all I have.
Thank you. That was indeed good news. For my report, just wanted the council and public to know that we are still working on our Endot Main Street project. I know it had been suspended at this point. It will, it's supposed to be before the Transportation Board again in June. I've been talking with our congressional delegation, Lieutenant Governor, and officials at Endot to try to make sure that, you know, we just have every shot possible for this. I also want to just thank the LEAK Committee and also the Nevada League of Cities. We've been in several conference calls. They've been hearing our concerns and concerns from our local businesses as we've gone through Phase 1 and now are Phase 2. They've done a lot of work. They were instrumental in helping us get restaurants inside casinos opened when we had that curfew earlier last week. Our movie theater here made the list too of things we were trying to get open, and they were able to help make sure that got into Phase 2. They've been making, I believe, the best of a very imperfect situation. And we, I certainly appreciate their response to this. And in other words, in other news, I have a haircut scheduled for next week. Really excited about that. Just want to get that out there. So we'll move on to item 6. The mayor will recess the regular city council meeting for a public hearing at 5:30 PM. Oh, that's a little early. So we will move on to item 8. Item for discussion, possible action only of the Ely City Council. The consent agenda, we've got minutes from May 6th, May 7th, and May 14th, and bills from May 13th. Are there any questions on any of these items or corrections that need to be noted? If not, I will entertain a motion on this item.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Do you have anything for the discussion on this? I will call for the vote to approve the minutes and bills. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll have to say on the minutes on the board chief, I was.
What did you hear? Did you have something to add in there?
I didn't see it, but I'm going to go and check. There's two, the Mitchell and Marvelli's car. Yeah, there was, they were weeding out there. I can't actually see it on here, so I don't know if I can approve the bill. It's on there though. I didn't see it.
I thought you were calling the last two.
There are a replacement, but there's a, oh, there is four here. I think all of us stand.
The bill is there?
On the bill's room.
Oh, okay. All right. We'll move on to B, New Business. Item 1, Councilman Beecher, discussion for possible action approval to negotiate fire EMS services. Interlocal agreement between the City of Ely and White Mountain County prior July 1st, 2020, has provided in Article 13, Section 13.1B of said agreement. Want to give a little background?
So this would just open up negotiations with the fire contract that we discussed in the last meeting without giving the notice to terminate?
Okay. The intent being is that we come to some kind of agreement prior to July.
Right.
Yes. Any questions on that?
What does that going to look like? Take it out of the negotiation team, and you and Jeanette, or?
Um.
Have teams?
I believe the intent is to come up with a couple, with an agreement with some alternatives, and bring them before the various boards, or each board for approval.
Yeah, I just am curious who's going to participate in it.
I mean, it's open for whoever wants to participate in that. I don't think we, as you said, any?
I know.
Any sort of?
Curious one, maybe?
If there's someone who wants to be on that, I see a problem.
I would be willing to help.
If the council votes in favor of this today, I believe the objective is to meet together with whoever wants to be on negotiated meeting, just the city people Monday next week, to go over what the issue is and some solutions to the problem of.
Oh, I agree totally. We need the data and the numbers, because we've been doing this for years. We really don't already set now, and I can pull those up pretty easily if we can open them.
Any other questions on the side?
Oh, yeah, I do. The agenda item is approval to renegotiate. It doesn't say anything about taking a team to negotiate and appointments to that. This agenda item is very specific.
The reason why it isn't, well, for you guys to decide it, I think Jennifer would put it together, because if you guys make that motion, we would have to make a public meeting. So what we do is leave it up to Jennifer, basically, to appoint the committee. And it's basically whoever wants volunteer.
It still comes back to the council.
Yeah, it will still come back to you guys for the approval.
And for changes, if you might want.
Yes.
I wonder if the attorney standing there, if she could read the guts of that Article 13, Section 13.1B, what exactly what that section ends.
So Article 13, 13.1B says, "Starting July 1 of 2020, this agreement shall be reopened for renegotiations of terms or for possible termination upon 12 months written notice to each party. Termination cannot occur until the completion of the fiscal year meaning to terminate the agreement on June 30 of 2021. The party wishing to terminate the agreement must notify the other party no later than July 1 of 2020." That's what that, that's what that provision states in this contract with the, with the county regarding the hire.
So I guess with that being said, we can negotiate if we decide to do that.
Right. This would be the approach, and I've talked to Jeanette. If the council approves this action today, we would send a letter tomorrow saying, "We request opening of negotiations earlier than the agreement provides for." So let's start negotiating now, prior to this July 1st.
And it's for fiscal year starting?
Twenty-one, twenty-two.
Twenty-one, twenty-three.
Right. Twenty to twenty-one is still in act with this contract.
And would be even if we gave notice.
Yeah.
Yes, and still continue on.
Any other questions? Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. With that, I'll entertain a motion on this item.
Want to refer?
Do I have a second?
I'll second. First, I. Good to hear. You take.
I'll let you have my support. Any other discussion on the side? And do you have any other question? With that, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry it in so order. We'll move on to item 2, Councilman Flankis, discussion for possible action reconsideration to remove the past utility, the past due utility fee penalties up to the amount of $921.84 from number 6, First Street in Ruth, Nevada, after request of the property owner, Wanda Gillespie.
Yes, I had discussions already over with others within the office and whatnot. Wanda Gillespie has made a, checked, made a hire available, and the services department decided to remove the lien of her property. Since that is done, it's kind of hard to go back and tell her, hey, you still owe us a pay. Anyway, in discussion with Jennifer, the members of, some members of the council, and not council, but the city, feel about getting some money to pay off the back through Bell and whatnot, it's better than not paying anything. So before vote, the old lady on this will get all the money that she has been paying within 3 months. She is making monthly payments right now. I tend to agree with that, since the, well, the useful department figured that was the right thing to do, since they want to pay that way, for the lien.
So just so I'm clear, there is no longer a lien on the property. Is that right?
Well, that may go away off the back. When she turned, as the past law is in full.
So she's got a payment plan in place for the principal?
Right.
And we're talking about waiving the penalties, is that?
Well, that was the recommendation.
And this is already got before the utility board?
Yeah, right.
The back page.
I tend to agree with her, I guess, full payment of what to do. Right.
Any questions for Councilman Flankis, or anybody else regarding the side?
Just question, Derby John, January 23rd, move to recommend approval of 50% reduction in penalty fees of paid vote. Member Ross on the utility board, second the motion, the motion, and now that was there, recommendation. So this is the full amount that's allowed.
So was the recommendation to waive the full amount or 50%? Or just 50%?
Well, the utility board said 50%.
Of penalties?
Yeah, for the penalties. But there would have been one for the, for all.
So on the, on this here, it says, "Member Derby, move to recommend approval or..." Is that a type of, then, should that say, "Have a 50% reduction in penalty fees?" Or approval of it as stated?
I agree with what Councilman Flankis is saying. We got a lot of money, should pay a lot of.
Yeah, I probably agree.
I made a motion to waive the number 2184.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions on the side? Hearing that, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Carry it in so ordered. We move on to item 3, Councilman Flankis, discussion for possible action approval to request liens due to the City of Ely be published with the White Mountain County Treasurer's tax sale publication.
In reviewing this and talking with our attorney and the county, the county at one time, the liens were also posted for sheriff's sale. And possibly some of that. The liens were pre-debted. When you bought the property, paid for the property, you're also given the notice to pay for the lien. You know, it's a title, it's a title over. But they've done away with that, they already know. But where they agreed to go ahead and publish the lien worth the sale of the property, they will not demand a collection of that lease. That will be up to the city to go for the lien against that property. Contrary to whatever anybody thinks and whatnot, when you purchase that type of property, it's on a sheriff's sale or whatever. What lien is on that property will go with the property, so the new owner will be liable for that thing. And therefore, we will have to re-notify when these things come up, so that we can be present or have somebody present to inform them that there is a lien on that property before they can get cleared title. Also, we have to tell the title companies, they have not been following up on that. They have not been reading the lien. But they have to read those liens and also publish that with their title search. If there is a lien on that property, they will not get title until that lien is paid. Now, if we want for gold the lien, that is up to the city council.
Is this, what's the legal ramifications of any of this? Is this legally doable? Is this?
Are, um, are they being things or?
Yeah, as I understand it, when they do a tax title sale, there is no title search done.
Right. So the purpose of this is to put on notice anybody who's looking at the tax sales that these select properties have a lien associated with them?
So we really?
And doesn't mean that that goes to someone else's, the county or the title company's court to handle? It's just saying, I'm looking at a property to buy at tax sale, and I've noticed that it has a lien on it. And it's just, it's providing notice out to the public that these, these have liens on them. After the sale, the property is sold, we, we receive the information of who it was sold to. That way, we can update that account and inform the new owner that there is a lien. And this way, we're noticing to them that there's a lien, not, it's not putting it into anyone else's court. It's just putting that information out there, because people don't do their due diligence when they're looking at properties to buy.
So when it says published, does that mean, does this go in the paper with some kind of list?
It would go in the paper with the county's publication of the tax sales that they are required to do for the law. They do it three months prior to the tax sale. So it would be put into the first sale, or the first notice in the newspaper would be in June 8, I believe.
So they would still have to cross-reference if they said, oh, this property is for sale, they would have to look over on our list and say, oh, that's, that's a lien. Is that correct?
Right. And my intention, if this is approved to request to the county, is that that information is just put with, with that sale. It's not a separate document, it says, you know, 123 Avenue A is, is up for sale. That carries a lien with the City of X amount of dollars.
So, so that could potentially alleviate the situations where people buy these properties and then come to us and say, hey, forgive this lien, this wasn't my charge, or whatever. Or I didn't, because they already should have known about them. Okay, right.
Yeah, so they go with the property regardless.
Sure, yeah, I'm aware of that, that this, this would notice that where there is an title search done. Right, exactly, in nature of the sale.
Any other questions on the side?
Is there a cost to put in the paper?
The, the county rule is worrying of that cost, of what the difference is if they recover it or not. And if there is a cost, the amount of liens currently as I looked this week is, would be minimal. Very minimal, in my opinion. I don't have an exact number.
I want to make sure.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Sorry.
Any other questions? For discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carry it in so ordered. We'll backtrack a bit through the item 6 for the public hearing. The mayor will recess the regular city council meeting for a public hearing at 5:30 PM on the following topics. Council members, city treasurer class, public hearing, discussion only, adoption of the tentative budget for the fiscal year ending June 30 of 2020 as final budget to be submitted to the Department of Taxation pursuant to NRS 354598. So with that, I will open the floor for discussion on the side.
Public comment?
Yeah, discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, on page 13, step 10, you have the fire department's home of 28.8% increase from 6/31 to the end of 6/32. How come such a large increase? And now you're telling me approving 709,000 with possible approval of 637. How come such a huge increase?
Well, the interlocal agreement, doesn't it, Jeanette?
Yeah.
Agreement for what?
The interlocal agreement that we're servicing the county with.
So some of that will be offset by revenue coming from the county?
Some of it will be offset by revenue coming from the calls that we make in the county. And I suppose some from the county, yes. Yeah.
The other concern I have was on, skip the F1, F2, under the Senator, Manville, loves to have railroad plant. Why are we missing the railroad plant? And is that part of the moment was taken out from the suit, or what's it there?
Nope.
Sorry. I don't respect the railroad itself.
And the progress fund for the railway?
We always had a railroad increase plan for several years now.
Okay, what does that, that do?
Right now, nothing. It's just there. Nothing's going in, nothing's going out.
Okay, since they basically distance themselves from under the city purview, you should take that out and put it where you need it.
This has to do with the railroad, I believe with the line, I think.
Yeah.
The what?
The railroad line going north. There's an enterprise fund they set up probably over ten years ago, wasn't it?
Yes. Two thousand and five.
Two thousand and five?
That's correct.
Okay.
And that should see that going on now.
That's not under the purview of the White House Railroad Foundation at all.
I'll make that clear. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Any other discussion on the side? Any discussion from anybody on the computer?
Any discussion on the tentative budget?
Okay. With that, uh, we move on to item seven, discussion possible action, items pertaining to the public hearing. Uh, council members, city treasurer class, discussion for possible action, adoption of the tentative budget for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one as final. Budget to be submitted to the Department of Taxation pursuant to N R S three five four dot five nine eight.
Okay. Um, you guys, I sent out an updated one. I don't know if you guys were able to print it off, but if you go to page twelve, it might take a while to speak. Virtual participants, please. Okay. So if we go to page seven, this is the, page seven and eight pretty much summarizes the general fund and all the funds except for the enterprise funds on it. And of course, the general fund is going to be our, you know, main one that we're doing. So column one on page seven is the beginning of balances that I estimated at the time I submitted the tentative budget to the state. The column two is the consolidated tax C T X tax that I have put in. I did take a twenty percent cut off of what the state had originally given us based off of the research and what's possibly to come. All the other revenues fall in column five. And then if you go down, it's the rest of the funds. You've got the street fund, you've got your, um, court funds, the fire protection, street redevelopment, capital improvement. And you see all the revenues that I projected for them there. And these are, the breakout, you can find the breakout of those back in the other supporting documentation on the other pages. It just consolidates everything on this. So then on page eight is your expenses. So you have your salary, your benefits, um, your operating expenses, capital outlay, and then any transfers in. I did try to put a contingency in, but I have to take it out here. It's just, we are too tight on this to, to do that. The transfer out is needed to keep the street fund because we have to supplement the street fund, the wages and benefits to keep their fund in a positive. So that's what the transfer out is to. So as you can see, the ending from balance for the general fund right now is a hundred seventy-two thousand, just a little over that. That does include the hundred thirty thousand, hundred thirty-six thousand approximately that we have in our ready fund for budget stabilization. So if you subtract that out, we are not looking to it. But we'll go forward with this and I will be upfront. I am very conservative on how I budget. I would rather not get caught unprepared and bought in if the revenues come in better than what I projected and add, you know, to the budgets, to the operating budgets as opposed to getting caught short and overspending because people want to tend to think that just because it's budgeted, you can spend it. And that's not the case. If money's not commanded, I'll just spend it. So, um, do you have any questions on this, these two pages?
Thank you. You did a very good job.
Oh, thanks.
And it is tough. I doubt you, my friend, it is not.
It is.
And it's a conservative budget. Very well done.
Well, and the COVID just hit us verbally, obviously. On page nine is your enterprise funds. These will always show if you're doing capital projects in a net negative income. And that is going to be the case most times because right now in the expenses, you have your capital. It always gets converted to an asset and taken out of your expenses. So if this kind of doesn't get the true picture of what it is, that'll come out. Either it comes out and becomes a, um, an asset or it gets put in, um, the construction in progress until we get it finished and then it becomes an asset. So don't be alarmed by those because what I did do, I will get to that when I get to the end of some, which is kind of next, I guess. Unless you have any questions on this quarter, it's just the next page is giving you a breakdown of your revenues that I put in. Of course, we had the tentative run that over for the lineup. And then, um, starting on page twelve, with standard general fund expenses by departments. Um, again, I did take a twenty percent off the operating expenses and I did do the twelve point five decrease to wages and the quarterly decrease to benefits. And the fire department, I did budget to try and hire a fourth person to honor contract, keep the contract with the county there. So I did include that position in there. Unless there's any other questions on that. Right. And then, of course, then you go through the beautification court assessment. One thing about, of course, the court funds, I will say, is it's at their discretion to use. So I always budget the max that they can spend because it's at their discretion to spend, not that we spend it.
Have you ever had any talk with them on what costs they may need to spend from there moving into their new?
I haven't talked to them yet, but I just basically put the bunches I put in there for them to spend if they needed it to. And then it's up to them to know what their N R Ses that dictate what they can and can't spend out of those funds. But he hasn't, he didn't, I didn't ask him. He doesn't say, so. We did, um, I don't know if Jennifer, um, let us, let you know that, uh, Kent Ross did donate twenty thousand um, to the revolving loan. I put it in as a budget item in this budget because the only way I could up the budget for the loans to a hundred thousand without making the negative balance. Because it was on budget with revenue this year and it's going, it'll wash basically, but it keeps us without looking, might be looking into the hole for the revolving loan fund this year. But then it gives us a hundred thousand to, we'll now give, or to spend alone, including the loans at this time. And the capital improvement fund, um, we do have, and they're budgeted for the fire station. Um, approximately four hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars. A little over that. Of course, the hundred thousand was for, um, purchasing an ambulance alongside the county for the, uh, E N X services. Um, there was some A Ds, which is, you know, operating needs for the ambulances. So, um, this year, the majority of it was, there was some in there for the street department and I think animal. Oh, possibly. I meant to bring that sheet. I'm sorry.
Cemetery.
At the cemetery, yeah. So. All right. And then in the enterprise funds, um, once again, we saw their sheet on, on page nine. The one thing I did want to point out about the capital, I did leave in, in the water sewer, the end of a project because I think we were all still kind of hopeful that like some miracle, we would still get to do that. And I didn't want to get caught short if that were to get cut loose and we get to do the end of a project. So I left that in there. And that's that there.
Did you have a, I think it'll be page sixteen, the road fund?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Page sixteen, I, I said, I think I said sixteen.
Sixteen. Okay, yes.
The only question I have, it's not really a question as a matter of fact. Looking at this, you know, our fuel tax doesn't even cover the wages and benefits.
No.
So you put a, uh, transfer for the general fund. Okay. And then the biggest, the one for the public transit and regional transportation commission, we don't have much money to spend.
Well, the public transit and the regional transportation, what's budgeted for revenue is also budgeted for expenses. That's going to be a wash. It always is. Those two should always balance to me because what we're spending and those we should be receiving from the county. And they're aware of this and it's in their budget also for public transit and the R T C.
Okay. And it's a crystal ball and we're hoping, but we don't know because that five cents diesel fuel tax, that may be a windfall.
And the R T C.
Is that first one, R T C?
Yeah, it goes into the R T C.
Okay. So we'll have more funding available for our use than to.
From what I understand, I, yeah. It, um, I know Elizabeth, when I talked to her about it, she was working on figuring out exactly what it. It goes into R T C to make sure what it was to be spent on, if there was any. This is my guess, if there's any restrictions on what it can or can't be spent on.
Because during some of the R T C meetings, you know, that almost all the fuel tax generally comes from the city dealer. So, and, but they've got a good, as a matter of fact, a great relationship between the county and the city now. It's played in public, I should say, R T C. So it's working great. So that five cents on diesel fuel, hopefully it'll be a big boost with both of these.
And then on the public transit, what we budgeted, we always make sure that we're not spending the full amount that's in there so that we can carry forward because your, your public transit is basically operating expenses for the street department other than wages and things.
Typical fund balance and street fund.
Well, as you, yeah, you can see last year it was in the rent, which technically you, you're not allowed to do, but it was. Um, and my goal is to make sure the cash flow stays in the positive for all of these funds, so.
Any other questions for the chair?
I just bent the corner. I reinforce what Ed said. Probably a great thing we have computers for many times, just have changes over the different estimates coming throughout some different agencies in the state. And I think the very educated proposal, let's run with it and see what happens.
Well, I'm, I'm with you guys. I think being proactive is going to be doing here. And I think that's exactly what we do is we, we come up with a very conservative budget that Jeanette has rather. And, um, you know, if it's better, great. If it's as bad as we hoped, then we're already prepared and you think, I think that'll get us through this year. I appreciate everybody's work on that, especially here's Jeanette. We have a motion for that to approve. Do I have a second?
All second.
Any other discussion on that budget? Hearing now, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing is so ordered. With that, we will go back to the item four, Councilman Carson, discussion for possible action. Appointment of Councilman Jim Alworth as city duty point of contact for City of Ely at all versus S and S shortline leasing LLC.
I think we need a motion to approve that.
Good motion. Do I have a second?
Well, I'll second it then.
All right. Any discussion or questions regarding the side?
I think it's not a good idea to appoint somebody. S and S has reached out to us and it'd be nice for somebody from this council to kind of get out ahead of the term so we're not chewing up a lot of turn of time and bring stuff back to the council. I think Jim did a great job on it, so.
Thank you.
Any other, any other comments or discussion? Hearing now, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing is so ordered. With that, we move on to item nine, public comment. Please state your name for the record and you will have three minutes.
Anybody on the phone, mayor?
I don't believe so.
Thank you, mayor. Mr. Mayor, uh, once again, I'm requesting a complete list of all liens settled, the amount collected, who made the agreement and the date it was made and approved. The city is not treating them any the same. The city is selectively enforcing the law, undercover law, and that means it's a stop there. Mr. Mayor, you're going for my property, four ninety High Street is still incorrect. I paid all of the fees. When I bought the property from the county, there were no liens. I got a checkback. The lame city attorney at the time filed a lien against the original owner a month after I had bought the property. It was a break in ownership. Your attorney failed to collect at the time of the matter. The city manager and the city treasurer are faking you. Again, Mr. Mayor, those candidates, the job I've got to go. City ordinance mandates a city treasurer, what's that the best to do in accounting? You're just losing me for nothing there. I've been up front, went out and asked, I told them I had the property and no time has I told there was a lien. I got a check of cash because my history with the city has not been good. She said anything that was in there was paid. And now, six months later, you bill me for seven hundred and forty-six dollars for capital improvements for outside water when there's no such thing? You bill me for partial sewer water when there was never water turned on? You're just harassing me, mayor. You gotta cut that out. If your people don't know what they're doing, you need to replace it. I don't know how many times I've ever told you that. Read N R S two sixty-six, mayor. You're favored and that needs to stop. Mr. Mayor, I asked in passing last week, what's the total debt to date in the railroad? Dead horse, we need to know. Mr. Mayor, uh, in the past, I've asked, I'm asking again. In regards to the four hundred ninety, you let your fifteen sixteen inch steel pipe, did it come back? You need to count for it. If you're going to sell it, then it's up for sale for anybody who could bid on it. Mr. Mayor, I'm again in mind, the city's got to reimburse me for the extension that I incurred for clearing a sewer problem at six eight one apartments as a city's responsibility. Again, in just two percent that might as being assessed in addition to late pay. City voted to pay for an upgraded larger water lines in two hundred and sixty thousand, more or less for the property extended from bucks to the charter school area, which is responsibility of the developer, not the city. N R S two sixty-eight point five, one two, two sixty-eight five point five six eight states, the city can now assist private business. I paid for these six eighty-one partner for years. It was not my responsibility. It was the city's. I want my money back, mayor. Six thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars point eight six. And I want an answer.
Do you have any other comments on the agenda for this?
Okay. With that, we'll close public comment. We'll move on to item German.
Sort of.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Awesome. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing is so ordered. Thank you.
Mr. Senator, Governor?
Do you have to sign anything?
Yes.
Budget for the law. Just pull them down there. Sheriff and I. Your time. Again, I just.
This has been a Georgetown production. George Chatch is reporting.